June the 2nd, 2020, meeting of the Iredle County Board of Commissioners. This time, I'd like you to bow your heads in silent prayer, particularly for our country and our community as we deal with concerns that members of our community have nationally, as well as the COVID-19 pandemic and how that's affected everyone and the economy to boot. Please stand, Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the United States of America. To the Republic which is standing one nation under one law indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Jones, you're in a different location tonight so we can achieve our social distancing along with our attorney, Mr. Valdez. Where is she? Is she in the corner? The amen corner.
[laughing]
So, Ms. Jones, if you'd please run through any adjustments to the agenda.
We don't have any adjustments to this month's agenda.
No adjustments from management. Any other adjustments, Commissioners? We have no presentations this evening. We have one appointment before the Board, the Iredle County Child Fertility Prevention Annual Report for Cases Reviewed in 2019. I believe Laura Johnson. There we go.
Good evening, how are y'all?
Good. How are you, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you for allowing me to come speak, and even with the postponement, I appreciate the opportunity. And I'll be quick. I believe you have all the paperwork in front of you. It's very confusing because in 2019, we reviewed the 26 deaths from 2018. So, we're always a year behind, and I always like to point that out. But we are tasked with looking to see if there's any kind of recommendations or advocates for system improvements. And one of the things that we touched on, or that we noticed through the deaths, excuse me, in 2018 was lack of prenatal care or no prenatal care among pregnant women. And so, our recommendation was to increase patient knowledge on preconception and prenatal care to prevent potential infant harm, injury, or death. And then, our proposed action, the health risk reduction literature, we distributed that to all of our OB providers, as well as the two community pregnancy resource centers in Statesville and in Mooresville, along with places like La Familia or other agencies that might cater to the Hispanic population. And then, we have all, we continue to provide that education through our pregnancy care managers, through the Health Department that are located at all of these facilities. So, that has been helpful when the doctor offices have said, hey, we would like more of this literature. Can we please get it? And we were able to do that. Some of our activities or accomplishments in 2019, we worked really hard on increasing the membership, excuse me, on increasing the membership. And I think you also have an attachment.
He's turning that up a little bit, trying to pick you up a little bit better.
Okay. So, maybe I do need to stand closer. I apologize. But I do believe you have a list of the current members. We increased our membership list by five. Thank you for all of your appointments. That greatly helped. And we, since I have been doing this for the last five years, probably have the most attendees at each meeting, which has been just truly remarkable, that these people have a buy-in to this and they really want to make a difference in Iredle County. Then, we also approved use of the pamphlets and flyers to educate families on safe sleep practices, breastfeeding, and then overall infant and childcare safety to reduce risk of harm, injury, or death. And then, after each meeting, we are tasked with making a report to the state coordinator, which is done. And we just review, review the information and then report any problems or concerns that we can address immediately without having to use grant money that we have in order to purchase literature or whatnot. So, any questions?
You know, I think, as I recall from the State of the Health Annual Report that we get, there's inclusion of prenatal deaths and all. And that's unfortunately one statistic that we are higher than the North Carolina average.
Yes, sir.
So, appreciate your, these work to focus in on all of those adolescent deaths, particularly this prenatal, because that's preventable.
Yes.
See the doctor ahead of time and get counseling. I wonder if you could provide us a, say, a four-year trend line in the, so we can get some context about whether things are going up or going down.
Yes, I can try to do that. Yes. And you're referencing the chart that I provided?
Yeah, the chart with the causes of death and age, if you can break those out and show a trend line.
My only question was on the, on the six, all other causes, six, which looks like a big number, but if it's six different things, then it's not a big number. Is there anything we should know about, or you want to tell us about the six?
And I knew one of you were going to ask that question. Should have known it was going to be you, Mr. Robertson.
You've been talking to Mr. Halp again. Holy.
No. All other causes, I'm going to give you an example. We reviewed an infant death. I think she was, is a little girl, four or five months old. Because of the way she was found, because there were no underlying medical conditions, because there was nothing noted in an autopsy, they could not pinpoint exactly SIDS, asphyxiation, things like that. So, the, basically, the unknown is what goes under all other causes. I actually did look back at some of the data from these particular cases, and it tends to be the infants that are, well, obviously, in this, birth to one year, that are categorized as that. So...
They can't tell you what's the matter.
Right. It's the unknown. So...
The reason I say that is kind of in, in the world of engineering and scientific reports or whatever, you, whenever you finish a study, you always publish, you know, what are the facts and stuff, and you use that to draw conclusions.
Right.
But there's always a part in the report where you put observations. That is, I noticed this. Maybe it doesn't mean anything. Maybe it means something. Maybe it doesn't. I don't know. I just observe it. And then, what can happen is, over time, you notice, well, a lot of other people are kind of making the same observation, and actually, we have a pattern. It's not as obvious. So, my only, this isn't a request, just kind of an advice. And this goes right in with what General Mallory has said. If we look over the past several years, because most of these other categories either have nothing in it, or just one every, now and again.
Right.
Maybe we ought to exclude some of these categories and include some new ones, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
These categories are driven by the report roll-up to the state. Do they require some of these categories?
All of these categories.
Again, just food for thought, not a request.
And I can pass it, mention it to the state coordinator.
What's helpful to you, to be able to disseminate to the general public.
Exactly.
Is, you know, those things that are truly preventable. So, drownings, you know, getting kids to learn how to swim, and adults to recognize situations that put them at risk. You know, a lot of it's education and awareness. So, we appreciate the impressive group that you've put together. It's a multidisciplinary approach, and that brings a lot of different perspectives to bear. And that's what you need to come up with.
Yes. And I would like to say one more thing in regard to that, the all other causes. I think that's why one of the focus of that, of our grant money, which is not a lot, was to focus on educating at the prenatal offices. And I think we even had some leftover material for the WIC office at the Health Department. So, trying to catch them early and really driving home, you know, the importance of prenatal care. Because you're right, there usually is a denominator that everybody eventually sees, but at that point, it may be too late. But we can always educate and hope to prevent in the future.
I mean, you know, along those lines, and I'll shut up. When my oldest, before he was born, you know, there was a baby shower, and, you know, we had a dozen books on baby care, preparing to be a mom, and all that kind of stuff. There's a lot of folks that they don't know. There's nobody to teach them, and they don't have any of that stuff. So, any sort of outreach that we have, maybe you can help. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've seen this information, obviously, before the Health Board. So, I'm not surprised when I see this. What is, to me, the most concerning is the suicide. That's, you know, to me, the most concerning. The prenatal care, prenatal conditions, you're never going to be able to effectively move that off, needle off the chart until everybody has access to healthcare in some form or fashion. You know, that's going to have to happen before you're going to be able to effectively move that. But...
Or choose us to behave properly while they're pregnant.
I know. I know. That's true. That's true. But, you know, somebody who's getting regular care is more likely to do that. The surprising thing to me is the drownings and the poisonings. I would have thought, that would have been higher. When I first saw the sheet, I would have thought it would have been higher. I can remember back, my wife and I, before we had kids, and now we have six, but, but before we had kids, we kept the nursery at the church. And after two hours of Bible study class, the ladies come back in and said, well, did you keep them all entertained? And I said, entertained? Keeping them alive for two hours was our problem, you know, because, you know, they're just all over the place. But it is, raising children is a very hard task. It really, really is. But I think as government, we have a responsibility to try to reduce all of those negative things that can harm them. And I really appreciate you looking, heading this up and looking at, out, Ms. Johnson. You really do a good job. And my last question is, is I hope that our chief that we put on there is behaving himself on that.
Oh, he's a gem. We love him.
Good deal. He will bring an interesting perspective.
He always does.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
I'm glad to see you eliminated the category of "in the care of" Vice Chairman Bowles. That's probably not a good idea. Thank you so much.
Chairman Mallory, I have one point of order, and I apologize. I failed to request approval for the agenda. When we had no amendments to the agenda, I failed to request approval of that. I apologize.
Well, that's probably my problem. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Normanall. In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Flieside. Motion carries unanimously, and I own that one.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for bringing the sword up so I could fall on it. Okay. We now move on to our first public hearing of the evening. And this is a public hearing to consider a request from Deborah Raper of Raper Management LLC to rezone approximately 19.58 acres along Old Mountain Road. And Mr. Matthew Todd will go ahead and spin that up for us.
Thank you. Yes, the first request we have is a rezoning on Old Mountain Road, outlined in blue, just shy of 20 acres. Staff does support this request. The front portion of the property lies within the 2030 Horizon Plan. It's adjacent in the area to other commercial uses, and traffic impacts should not exceed road capacity. Again, you can see the corridor commercial designation going across the property. Property is existingly vacant. Front parts filled with the backs, back in woods. Just another aerial image showing the property. The planning board did vote 7-0 to recommend this request. This property is on our left, with the woods along the road. You're looking up toward Islandport Road, looking across Old Mountain Road, and looking south on Old Mountain Road, back down toward the interstate. There's been no opposition expressed at planning board or over the phone over the last month or so. There are watershed restrictions for this property. I know they're rezoning a large portion of it, but based on watershed, there'll be limits to the amount of impervious area, which will most likely encourage the commercial development toward the front portion of that property, leaving the back the pervious area for stormwater. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions regarding this request. It is a straight rezon.
Any questions for Mr. Todd? Hearing none. I will open this public hearing. And I will note that anyone that wants to call in, there's a number to call. That's 878-3051. So, call now so you can get in line.
Operator standing by.
Herefore, we have had a limitation of 10 people for this room for mass gathering. Under the definitions of what a mass gathering applies to, it does not apply to government proceedings. So, you can come in person. You just have to maintain social distancing requirements. But we'll continue to have the ability to call in until such time as we turn that option off. We have one person, Deborah Raper, who has signed up for the public hearing. It's not necessary to be heard, but if you'd like to, the mic is yours. No questions, don't leave. I'd ask, inquire as to anyone else that is present, whether you'd like to be heard on this matter. Anyone called in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I will close this public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion to approve the amending of the county 2030 Horizon Plan to extend the corridor commercial designation in the entirety of this property, and to approve the zoning map amendment. The zoning approval and kind use amendment are reasonable and in the public's best interest, because a portion of this property already lies within the 2030 Horizon Plan corridor commercial area. It is adjacent to various existing commercial properties, and the majority of this GB use should not exceed existing road capacities.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Flieside. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Raper, and good luck in developing the property. Second item we have is a public hearing regarding text amendments to the Land Development Code as it relates to what is formerly known as solar farms and is now known as a solar energy.
System.
System. SES.
The text amendment we have before tonight, we've, over the years, we've amended this section several times in our ordinance as technology changes or different information becomes available. And most recently, we dove back into some amendments, kind of broad as far as what they cover, but we looked at, we took that opportunity always to look at the entire section. A couple of the things that we did address was, we wanted to make sure that we had the appropriate financial guarantees in place in case an approved solar facility, for some reason, went out of business, or there was a need for the county to move forward with a decommissioning process if the owners or applicants did not take that burden upon themselves. So, we've put that financial guarantee back on that applicant, and we've spelled out the different mechanisms that they can go through to guarantee, basically, that there would be money available to do that. The other change is, we changed it, previously, it's been a quasi-judicial process, which goes through the Board of Adjustment for Approval. We've changed that over to legislative process, which goes through planning board and then county commissioners for final approval. We've added a 50-foot setback from perennial streams. We also added in there that, the issue has been in the past screening of these facilities. Well, what screening may work for one would not work for the other. Where in one case, it might make sense to require screening, in the next, it would not. So, what we did for that, basically, is we just, we put language in there to encourage the screening be discussed and handled throughout the planning board and Board of Commissioner process. So, it can be looked at on a case-by-case basis, rather than coming up with just a blanket statement that says they've got to do some type of screening. We've left it up to the process. Again, it would be a conditional request, so they're going to have to produce a site plan showing the property, showing exactly where the panels would be, and how the property is going to be developed. And then, that's when the specific screening could be part of that site plan. And as we've experienced in the past, neighbors on different sites around these sometimes have different preferences. So, a lot of that stuff could be worked out through that process. You know, the other issue, and we did, we did address it somewhat with the perennial stream setback. There was a lot of talk with environmental concerns with these facilities. And when you look out there, there's a wealth of information out there. Unfortunately, there's experts on both sides of this issue that say there are no hazardous issues. And then, there are some experts that say there could be hazardous issues. So, you know, where we had to hang our hat as far as weeding through that is with the North Carolina Clean Energy Text Center. It's out of NC State. It's funded by state legislation. They've got a white paper out that says that there's such trace amounts of any hazardous materials that it's not going to cause a problem. That's the technology and the knowledge that we have today, unfortunately. So, that's kind of where we based, you know, our, crafted our regulations based on that. I will also point out that the state is specifically, the Environmental Management Commission, they've required that there be a state program that's going to, the decommissioning on, at their level, to see if there's something specifically they would want to require, looking at hazardous waste from the facilities. They're going to come up hopefully with some preferred methods of disposal. And then, they're also looking at the economic and environmental impacts of these facilities and trying to weigh that out. And they're supposed to have kind of a report out by January 1st of 2022. So, I'd imagine we will be amending this section once again in the future as technology changes and needs changes, preferences change. It's one of the sections in the ordinance that, over the years, has got a lot of attention at different times. And I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the text amendment.
Now, this regulation does not apply to people that have onsite systems for personal or their business use. They're not selling the power to somebody else. So, it does not apply in those instances, or for rooftop systems, correct?
Yeah, for somebody, just a residential homeowner that wants to put some panels out there, it does not apply to, to a commercial business that's wanting to put them on a rooftop. For example, there is language in there, but it doesn't require the full rezoning process, the conditional rezoning process. But there are some guidelines in there, and they've been in there for a while. That's not, that's not something that we've changed.
Are there any additional comments or questions?
Matthew, basically, the way we address the environmental concerns on, through this process, you know, the, in the, I was asked, I had a call today, was asked on the decommissioning, on number four, on the decommissioning plan. It calls for a five-year update, and then number seven requires the landowner or tenant to notify the county when the site is abandoned. Is there a need for an annual verification by the county that there still is the bond and/or the cash or the letter of credit, in order to make sure annually the company has not gone belly up or filed bankruptcy? Anyway, because I think the most important thing for the environmental concerns people had was making sure that the decommissioning revenue was going to be there if a company did fold.
No, my understanding is it would still be there if the company folded. You know, as far as, you know, the update every five years, that's just to make sure that that value goes up as costs go up. And then, wanting the landowner to notify us where it's abandoned is just so we can, we can be aware, and if we need to, start moving forward with the next step, basically.
I'm saying, what if the landlord or tenant does not notify you, and by the time your five years rolls around, it could be three years later, how would, how would that be addressed? That's what the concern was with the phone call I had. Just not sure we had thought about that during the process. I'm just saying, if there's an annual verification that the tenant's still in business and following the procedures and protocols laid out, then there wouldn't be a lapse in a five-year verification, because they could be gone two or three years before you would know about it.
Well, and we're, we're going to monitor these. I mean, when it comes time, when that five year starts approaching, I mean, we're going to be reaching out ahead of time, because it's, it's not something that we can reach out to them the day that it's about to expire and say, hey, we've not got that revised letter of credit or anything. So, we're going to be monitoring that. It's not spelled out in here, but we'd have to, we'd have to monitor it. And that's going to be based on the financial guarantee and just keeping track of those, same as we do for our subdivisions where we have financial guarantees. I don't know.
You might not have to have it laid out in this zoning regulation, just, but just as a matter of internal department policy. as a matter of internal department policy, monitoring it on a recurring basis, since there's so few of these, shouldn't be any kind of an issue. Just keep your finger on the pulse. Any other comments or questions? I will just say this, that, that one of the major changes here is in process, not the substance of what you're looking at, but just to make a very quick point about it, before this matter went before the Board of Adjustment, and that is an evidentiary-based presentation, and typically, to be able to raise concerns in that venue, you end up having to hire an attorney to represent you. As Mr. Todd has said, this has moved from that type of process to a legislative process in front of this board, which we believe will give all citizens access to a body where they don't have to hire attorneys to make their voices heard and that we can evaluate the pros and cons and the scope and, and all of that and respond accordingly. So that's the process change that's involved. The Board of Adjustment does a great job, you know, looking at special use issues, and oftentimes, those can run into several days of testimony over several months in some cases. So I think that this not only makes it a friendlier process for citizens, but it also is probably going to chew up less staff and attorney time along the way. So.
How many times have we reviewed this and other, planning board reviewed, other people? It's been about a half a dozen or so, right?
It's bounced back and forth and...
It's been a good many times. The reason I say it is our form of government sometimes moves slow, but it's to be very, very deliberate, and I can honestly say, this thing has really been vetted out. It's from both sides, what's fair to everybody, and, and, yeah, it takes a little bit of time, and only Moses, you know, when I saw this in our agenda, it's like, man, I got to read this thing again. But that's the right way to do it. So, so this, as you said, General Mallory, this is, this is about the process, and I think it's better. So that's good.
Okay. Well, at this time, I don't see that anyone signed up to be heard. I will open the public meeting, a public hearing, rather, and inquire if there's anyone in the audience that would like to be heard, or if you'd like to be heard telephonically, you should be dialing in within the next 30 seconds.
Seven, eight, thirty, fifteen.
Okay. Don't see anybody in the audience that's waving their hands and jumping around. Raymond, do you want to have me here?
I'm already in the call.
Okay, that's right. All right, well, hearing or not hearing any ringtones, we will close this public hearing, and I'll ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the zoning text amendments and make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted 2030 Horizon Plan and that said approval is reasonable in the public interest and furthers the goals of the 2030 Horizon Plan because it aims to mitigate future development concerns and addresses changes in the alternative energy industry within a developing county.
Very articulate motion by Commissioner Robertson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Todd, and thank you, Raymond, if you would please convey our appreciation to the planning board for the, the investigation, the discussion, we read through all the notes and the minutes, and, you know, it was a lot of good back and forth, and I think we've arrived at a good place. We now have a public hearing on the fiscal year 2021 budget for Iredell County, and that will be teed up by our very own county manager, Beth Jones.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. I'm going to tag team this with our finance officer, Deb Cheek, but I'm going to go ahead and give a quick introduction. I presented at our last meeting the budget message that I prepared, and yes, it was very long. It was about 10 pages long, going through the process and all the different steps that we took and the things that we looked into creating this budget and the tough decisions that were made and recommended to the board as part of this budget. And just to give a quick recap, budget requests from our department directors are back to us in February. So in February, when our department directors created their budget requests for their departments, we were looking really good as far as our economy was strong and stable. We had a lot of exciting things that, to look at and to implement and services to provide to our citizens. And then, in a matter of a few weeks, COVID-19 hit in March, and we had to go back to the drawing board. So what you had that was presented to you at our last commissioner meeting was really the second budget for this upcoming fiscal year. Because when COVID-19 hit and the stay-at-home order was in place and things were beginning to, to come to a virtual halt, we started to see and hear about impacts that all of that was going to have on our revenue. We have two major revenue sources, ad valorem or property tax and sales tax. Those are our two biggest revenue sources. Sales tax with a stay-at-home order and several businesses closed, that was going to be impacted. But what we did not know, and what we still don't know the full effect is, the magnitude of that impact, because our sales tax has a three-month lag. So what we see in April, what happens in April, we won't see until three months later when we actually see that revenue. So there was a lot of guesstimation, a lot of speculation, a lot of trending analysis, things of that nature. So with that being said, we scaled back the budget, and we presented to the board a worst-case scenario budget. What our hope is, is that as we began, we've moved from, from phase one to phase two to phase three, and we begin to adjust to the new normal, quote unquote, as a result of COVID-19, and our economy recovers and picks up, what we're hoping is that in the, towards the end of this calendar year in December, we will see our revenues pick back up, specifically our sales tax, and then we're hoping that the board can come back and do a mid-year review of our budget and possibly add certain things back into our budget that were cut. So that is, that is certainly something that we're hoping for, but if that does not happen, the budget that is presented to you is a worst-case scenario budget for the next fiscal year. So with all of that being said, there are a lot of positive things with Iredell County. We are the 14th largest county in the state of North Carolina. Our population growth is projected over the next four years, and we look at our budgeting cycle, we look at it in four-year chunks. So from 2020 to 2024, our population is projected to grow 5.74%. That's, that's healthy growth in our county, in our population, and that would, that does put us the 14th largest state, or largest county in the state of North Carolina out of 100. But with that, out of 100 counties, our current tax rate, our 1920 tax rate is, there's only 12 counties that have a lower tax rate than Iredell County. So you've got a very large county, and then you've got, we're, we're kind of in the top tier as far as size, but we're also in the lowest tier as far as sales tax, I mean, not sales tax, but property tax. So with that, we struggle because we have a lower property tax. So we kind of struggle, struggle to provide services that these larger counties provide that have a much healthier tax rate. We struggle to keep up. But the good news is, when we do have an economic downturn, that lower tax rate is, is a blessing to our businesses, our residents, our industries that quite honestly are struggling during the economic downturn. So those are things to kind of put into perspective as, as we move forward and look at our, our budget that we're, that we're presenting to the board. As I said, our two largest revenue sources are ad valorem, which is property tax, and that makes up 62.44% of our revenues, and then sales tax that makes up 16.57. We have adjusted back our revenue projections specifically with sales tax. We've adjusted that back. We've adjusted back our collection rate for our property tax, so we've adjusted those revenues downward as well. And we've also adjusted the revenues for our fee for services because we do not anticipate that we're going to, we're going to receive all of the fees that we thought we were going to get back in February before all of this hit. Our major expenditure categories are pretty consistent with what we've seen year over year with education, public safety and human services being our top three as far as categories that we are spending funding in. With education, one penny, for every one penny, 50% of that goes towards education. So it definitely shows the board's interest and desire to invest in our future and invest in our education of our youth. Specifically about education in this budget proposal, it does recommend a new funding formula for education, and this was upon the request of specifically Iredell Statesville Schools. Years passed, there was a need for capital, and we started sinking additional dollars into capital to try to catch up with facility needs and things of that nature. We've been very successful with that, but those extra dollars that we were putting in capital, it really is needed on the current expense side now. So Iredell Statesville Schools asked us to look at our funding formula and try to come up with a funding formula that addressed their current need and what they anticipate being their, their future need going forward, which is current expense. So we came up with a completely new funding formula for education, and what it does is it shifts, it shifts those extra dollars that we're putting into capital, it shifts that into current expense. So you're going to see a big uptick in current expense, and that basically takes our per-pupil funding from what it is currently, $1,675 per student, to what's proposed next year, $1,940 per student. That gives the schools the ability to, to make those decisions and be able to add those needs to address the needs of the students, be it, you know, be it SAPs or school nurses or school resource officers, or restoring back the percentages that were cut from the teacher supplements, things of that nature. It really gives them the funding to be able to do those things that they haven't had the ability to do in years past. Those are, those are some of the big-ticket items and some of the highlights of the budget. I'm going to let our finance officer, Ms. Cheek, come up and give you a little bit more of the detail regarding the different categories. I will say that we did, anybody that was paying attention at our winter retreat, we went through our capital projects, and we ranked those based on priority. But then, when we had to go back, we made some, some pretty big cuts in our capital projects as well. There are some capital projects that are still in there because we are obligated based on lease agreements and other things of that nature to make those improvements, but that will also be something that, as our, our revenues tick up, and I'm hoping that will happen sooner rather than later, we can go back and revisit those as well. The other thing, and I, and I would be remiss to mention this, this was a very difficult decision to not recommend pay increases for county employees in this upcoming fiscal year budget. That was a very difficult decision. I, I'll be quite honest, it was not a popular decision among county employees. I've gotten a lot of feedback. Without that ongoing sustainable revenue source to pay for those increases, I feel that I would be derelict in my duty to recommend a pay increase not knowing if that funding to sustain it and support it will be there. So what I would like to request of the board is, the first thing they look at, the first thing you look at when and if the revenues do come back, is to please consider those increases for county employees. Because when everybody else was shut down and everybody else was working from home, your county employees were, were pulling extra hours. Your public health department, they were going out there doing close contact tracing with these COVID-19 patients. Your EMS, they were going out there on the front line. They were the only ones that were responding to anybody that was suspect to be positive for COVID-19. So your county employees were not going home. Your county employees were continuing to provide those necessary services. There was a huge increase in demand for their DSS or those, you know, for Medicaid and for food nutrition services and things of that nature. So, and I know I'm preaching to the choir because I know that each and every one of you are very sensitive and very aware of the demand that this crisis has had on the county employees. And again, I know I'm preaching to the choir, but I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record and that specifically the county employees know that we do appreciate them, we do recognize the work and the tireless hours that they have put in, because when a crisis hits, we're needed the most, and our employees have responded, and they have responded in a, in a very selfless way, and they have been there through thick and through thin and answered the phone morning, noon, and night. So I cannot say enough about them. But with that being said, I'm handing it over to our finance officer, Ms. Cheek, and let her walk through some details before we open up the public hearing.
Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to run through the numbers right quick, and I will just say at the outset that by state statute, we are required to have balanced budgets. So when I read these numbers off, it's one number, but we, we know that all of these funds are in balance as I go forward. First, with the general fund, we have a proposed budget of $230,357,300. That is at a tax rate of 5.375 for 100 valuation. That is a one cent tax increase that was voted in by the citizens in March. There was an error in reporting with the Statesville Record and Landmark today that we had a three-cent increase, but it is a one-cent increase on the tax rate. It is based on a valuation of $26,674,720,000, and we're using a collection rate of 98.91%, which is our 2018-19 collection rate. As Manager Jones indicated, we do have a new funding formula this year with the schools that switches some excess funds from capital to current expense. That was at the request of Iredell Statesville School System. That brings our school expenditures for Iredell Statesville Schools to $52,552,000. Mooresville Grade School District, $15,162,000. Mitchell Community College, $5,949,000. School debt service for all three systems, which will be paid by Iredell County, is $27,025,000. We will continue with school safety and security that is funded solely by Iredell County in the amount of $1,319,000, which takes our total funding to our school systems of $102,8,712. We also have the budget for our all-county Fire Protection Service District. The proposed budget is $13,583,902. That is of a tax rate of nine cent per 100 valuation, and the valuation is $15,302,000. And we took the collective tax rates of all of our districts that we had before and averaged those out so that the collection rate is, is inherent to the service district that was there prior. We have special revenue fund of ICATS, our transportation system of $33,455. A special revenue fund for our 911 system, $715,912, I'm sorry, $192. Our special revenue Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, spending allocation of $445,170. Our enterprise fund that is solid waste has a budget of $11,024,732. That does include one fee increase of special handling that went from $35 to $38. We also have the Enterprise Fund Specialty Services Division of EMS with... We also have the Enterprise Fund Specialty Services Division of EMS with a budget of one million, five hundred and fifty thousand, eight sixty-six. We have our Health Insurance Fund of twelve million, six thirty-three, five sixty. Property and Liability Insurance Fund of nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, one oh five. And our Workers' Compensation Insurance Fund of eight fifty-eight, six fifty. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from Ms. Cheek?
Ms. Cheek, the education funding, uh, we've talked before, and, and so you mentioned the schools asked for a funding formula change. We've had two of the three systems sign the MOU, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But to clarify something, the education funding with all expenses that goes to education is still about fifty percent of every penny we bring in, correct?
That's correct.
So we basically fund the county and all depart, all twenty-five departments and all other obligations responsibilities for the county with fifty percent of the revenue that comes in.
Yes.
That's a pretty good job.
That is.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay. I just, I just wanted to say on behalf of our board, um, with the obligations responsibilities we have, you know, you guys made every effort to satisfy the priorities of the Board of Commissioners, um, working within the confines of available revenues as a result of our current economic condition. The majority of these requests and needs must be prioritized, delayed in some cases, eliminated due to the limits in revenues, as the manager said in her, uh, first opening for this. I just want to say thank you. It's a best testament because none of us know the impact of the COVID-19 in the economy. None of us knows the potential impact nationwide in a lot of things with the current situations that, uh, pop up out of nowhere that we deal with. So I just wanted to say thank you, uh, for the, for the efforts that you have done, the work you put into it. And I think our citizens hopefully will be proud that, uh, through, uh, strict conservative fiscal responsibility, previous boards have put the county in good financial state. We've tried to continue that. Our administration staff has done that. I think our staff over the years has done more or less, and I want to again thank the public through the COVID-19 thing is, you know, we've had to unintentionally impact negatively citizens by changes to protect them along with staff and changes at the landfill and other places. But our staff has stepped up along with law enforcement and emergency services and health, all the other things you guys have said, emergency management, trying to provide PPE. But I just want to thank the public and, and everyone involved. You know, we're all in this together as a county, as a society, a state, a country. So, um, we're doing the best we can with what we have before us, and we'll continue to do that. So again, thank you for what we're doing. I want to thank the citizens for their cooperation.
Commissioner Howe, any further comments?
Um, I was just gonna, um, just make a, a few high points. First is, uh, this was a tough budget, and we know you had to do it twice, and before this year's over, you might have to have done it a third time, and you don't get paid any extra for doing that. That's what tough times look like, okay? And those weren't forty-hour work weeks either. Um, so I, I just want to recognize we, that, that we understand that. Um, I, I know that our county manager, uh, received a whole lot more requests for money than, than she could allocate out in her proposal, and, uh, and those, and, and it's easy to be a politician, it's easy to be in public service if you can tell everybody yes. But when there's not enough money, you have to say no to a whole lot more people just so that you can say yes to the bare essentials that you have to do. And I will say that Ms. Jones adopted our priorities that we set, and she implemented them. So if anybody's got a, a bitter taste in their mouth, come see the five gentlemen up here. She just did what we asked her to do. Ms. Cheek, I'll throw you in that, in that bus as, as well. They just followed the, the guidance that they were given, and I gotta tell you, you did exactly what we asked you to do with respect to the fact that we did not, um, include any wage increases basically for anybody. And, you know, I can't think, I, you know, if, if you asked me to debate, do we pay our, the folks in EMS enough? Well, no. Um, heck, most of our firemen are volunteers. We pay some of them, but most of them don't get paid anything at all. Uh, would you want to be a sheriff's deputy? Would you be, want to be a sheriff's deputy today? No. Would you want to be a tax collector? No. Would you want to be a, a telecommunicator who every day they deal with people on the telephone who are having, if not one of the worst days of their life, if not the worst day of their life? Would you want to be a teacher? Would you really want to go teach third graders? Or worse yet, eleventh graders, you know? So everybody who's connected with county government, would you want to work at our solid waste facility? I don't think we're supposed to call it the landfill anymore, but we all know what it is. Would you really want to do that work? It's not easy stuff. Everybody in the county, everybody in the county kind of has an element to their job description that makes it difficult. And we couldn't, we couldn't do anything that, really to help any of them right now. I want to emphasize, right now, the national unemployment rate is somewhere between fourteen and twenty percent, and it kind of bounces around. We hear different numbers, and we're really not sure where we are in it right now. What we know is that, you know, it's not three percent anymore. Very difficult to give pay increases when you have almost depression-level unemployment in the, in the nation. This too shall pass.
Amen.
It will, this will not last forever. Our country will come back. This county will come back, and when it does, we'll get the wage, we'll get the wages right. We'll get that right. But it's temporary. But I wanted to, uh, Ms. Jo, you know, in addition to talking about what our county employees do when they're on the job, I want to also just give one, one other shout-out. Every time that I go to a rescue squad banquet, a volunteer fire department banquet, go to an athletic association where they have the coaches, go to any sort of a church fundraiser, uh, stuff, and, and you see people from the faith community there, go to PTO meetings, county employees are always, always, always at all of those things. They tend to volunteer outside of work, which shows that the spirit in the Army, we called it selfless service, which was one of our core values, that value of selfless service, we see where they donate, not, not only they work hard when they're on the payroll, they work hard in a lot of other places where they're not on the payroll. All I can tell you is county employees, we've heard you, Ms. Jones has heard you, and she's made it very clear to all of us, in a very respectful way I might add, that when the budget situation gets better, who's first in line? We understand that. We got it, okay? And, and I think, and there, I don't think anybody's not committed to that. While I say that, I, I, we recognize there's a hundred thou, I mean, I'm sorry, there's, we have over a thousand county employees, but we also have a hundred and eighty-eight thousand taxpayers, and we have to balance the needs of both groups, and it's really hard to find that perfect balance. So our tax rate is the thirteenth lowest in the state. It's not bad. If we were average, we'd be at fifty. We're a long way from fifty, so for the hundred and eighty-eight thousand taxpayers, you came out pretty good on the deal. You came out pretty good on the deal. Ardell Statesville Schools and Mooresville Grade School System, we, they requested that we give them less money for capital and more for expense, and they've made that request for many years. This year, we followed what they asked us to do. And by the way, this gives them the freedom, this gives them the freedom and their choice that if they want to take some of that money that used to go for capital and use it for teacher supplements or whatever they want to spend it on, it's, we didn't tell them how to spend it. They just said that they wanted money switched from capital to expense. We've done that, and I will say that in this budget, we did what we've done with just about every other budget, and that is if, if the county had four percent more money to spend, the schools always got more than four percent. Of all the departments, of all the segments, they always came out better than everybody else. They can't say that they got the least increase. The budget typically starts with them, and, and, and everybody else kind of makes it work after that. And the, the final note that I would like to say is that property taxes are fixed, which is, which is fixed. So the economy can go up, economy can go down, that's fixed. All of our issues that we've talked about have primarily been due to the variability of sales tax revenues. That's sixteen percent of our budget. If you want to make, if you want to help us, help this community by local. Don't go to Hickory to go shopping. Don't go to Charlotte to go shopping. Don't go to Mecklenburg County to go shopping. Go shopping in Statesville. Go shopping in Troutman. Go shopping in Mooresville. We'll get the money, and that money will stay in this community, and I just, I, I just want to emphasize that. This is, this is a tough budget. It's a fair budget. Everybody, everybody is shouldering part of the burden here. Everybody is, and that's the way a good budget should be. Hopefully, uh, the next board will take a look at this in December and January, and I'm feel sure that it'll look a lot better. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Thank you for the staff, and I appreciate the opportunity to make a few comments. Thank you.
Any other comments? I will go ahead and open this public hearing. We don't have anyone specifically signed up. I'd inquire if anyone would like to call in. Now's the time to do that. I would inquire of anyone in the audience if you'd like to be heard. Well, I'll give them about thirty seconds. I will just say this, uh, you know, the budget that we have before us is an increase over last year's budget. We have cut the rate of increase, but we have not cut back county services. In fact, we have added some capacity and capabilities that are needed to service the citizens' needs of this county as we are growing, as has been mentioned. Uh, but we have a cash flow problem, and we hope that, and, and it's a nine million-dollar cash flow problem over the next six months or nine months. Uh, so we are however postured to be able to recover quickly if we don't go through another lockdown or significant reduction of economic, economic activity due to COVID-19. That's why it's so important that all of our citizens continue to take this pandemic seriously, uh, that we are opening up the account, uh, economy is not a license to go back to pre-COVID-19 behaviors. You need to maintain social distancing. If you are going into a store, you ought to have a mask on. That's just in, in consideration for the other customers and in consideration of the employees in those stores. But in the political statement, this is about a communicable disease. Now, uh, we can walk and chew gum at the same time. We can balance our lives with our livelihoods, and in fact, that's an imperative. We have to do that because we are postured better than most counties to be able to, uh, recover quickly, and I anticipate that we will if people mind their Ps and Qs. When you look at the per capita, uh, positive test rates in Ardell County, um, they're about fifteen per ten thousand population per capita, and that's of known cases. There's a lot of other people out there that have it, but, you know, they have either had a mild case or it's been asymptomatic, uh, but the ones that have presented themselves having, uh, actual, uh, symptoms or being hospitalized, uh, we've captured that data. Uh, we've also started mass testing, just, just anyone who has any kind of concern about being exposed can now get tested. See your local doctor or your healthcare provider, uh, and we, and pay attention to press releases and stuff. We will have locations where you can basically drive up and get your, get your test if that's important to you. But when you compare our per capita rates with other counties in the metro area of Charlotte, uh, we are, uh, among the best rates out there, and that's a testament to our citizens taking this situation seriously, uh, and our employers taking this situation seriously. So that's the key for us being able to get back on the horse and ride at a full-tilt gallop back to where we, uh, that glide slope that we've been on and will continue to be. So, uh, hearing no, uh, calls or any other indications of, uh, desire to be heard, I will close this public hearing and ask if there's a motion. No, not tonight.
Sorry. Um, as a result of COVID-19 restrictions and the fact that some people may not feel comfortable attending, um, and just to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to participate or share comments, the guidance from the state is that if we have public hearings regarding issues of this, that we delay decision on it until the next meeting. So public hearing tonight, adoption of the, of the actual budget would be June the sixteenth at our next commissioner meeting.
Okay, well, that, that'll be on the agenda for June sixteenth.
Correct.
That's cutting it pretty fine. I know you always like to have the budget in hand by the end of May or first of June, so.
Yes, because there's a lot of work that still has to go into place to be able to start with a new budget July one, but unfortunately, we're having to adjust and turn.
I don't know what's going on in other counties, but I'll have to tip of the hat to our staff. Uh, you know, we have never missed a commissioner's meeting. Uh, when we're limited to ten, we had two, two commissioners calling in on, uh, and I never missed a, a regular order of business, uh, since the beginning of this issue, but we've maintained the required precautionary measures. So, uh, I want to thank our, uh, headshed staff and all our departments for, uh, never missing a beat, for adapting and overcoming, and, uh, we just need to continue to march.
Well, I will tell you, this board really charted a course because we were one of the first to have a very successful public hearing and have ways for people to participate and not have to come physically be here. So there were managers all over the state that were calling and saying, how did you do that? We need, we have, we've been delaying our public hearings, we've been delaying things. How did you do it and how did you do it successfully? So that speaks volumes to this board and the fact that you are willing to be, to be proactive and kind of think outside the box to, to be able to keep business moving forward, but do it in a safe way and still allow the community to participate.
Thank you. We'll now move on to administrative matters that are appropriate for our consent agenda, and if you could please summarize those, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. We only had one item, which, which was a request from John Ferguson, Statesville Airport Manager, for approval to expend four thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. for approval to expend $4,265 as a local match for an $85,288 grant from the North Carolina Department of Transportation to be used for additional environmental study requirements concerning runway safety at the Statesville Regional Airport, and that was, that was agreed by consensus.
And that's $4,265, correct?
I'm sorry, yes, $4,265, which, there's actually a 10% match required, and we split that with the city, and that is our portion.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve it, Chairman.
A motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion, likewise, nays? Motion carries unanimously. We have no announcements of any vacancies. We did announce at the last meeting a number of vacancies on a number of different boards. We are delaying the announcement of the assignment of folks' appointment to those boards because we've had a fair amount of interest of people sending in applications and indicating an interest about what's going on on these different boards. So I would encourage anyone out there that has a desire to consult our county website, it has a list of all those boards and commissions that we are looking for people to serve on. These are opportunities to have an impact on your local community and the decisions that we make that spend dollars and allocate resources to achieve those desired outcomes. So, please check that and fill out your application and get it in as quickly as you can so we can rack and stack them and be able to put these before the board. So, the appointments before boards and commissions will occur next meeting. Is there any unfinished business? Hearing none. This is not a public comment period. That is our next meeting. Is there any new business?
I think we're going to do a little recognition. Is this an appropriate time for, we can talk about, or we?
Yeah, that's fine.
I was just going to do a couple of thank-yous and recognition if we could. First of all, even though the states opened up, our COVID-19 hospitalization rates remain low, and let's give thanks where thanks is due. There's an awful lot of medical professionals. The citizens did their part, and our Jane Henson and the Health Department, they were very proactive, got out there and really got into the high-risk, you know, the adult or nursing homes, whatever you want to, however, we want to politically correct call them. But they were, they were very proactive, getting out and identifying what we, well, they were identified as a vulnerable part of the population, and they got out there first. And I would say that, that we as a county have reaped the benefits about opening back up mainly because of such a good job they did with what I think probably kept our numbers, our numbers down. The next thing is, I'd like to at least recognize that, you know, throughout the United States, we've got Americans throwing blocks through windows, looting stores, assaulting police officers, just acting crazy. Has nothing to do with demonstrating or anything, it's just thievery. And in Iredale County, here this week, we've had, I think, on two occasions, if I've got it right, some groups have marched through to, to share their opinion, to express their outrage and their disappointment, what happened, not here, but at Minneapolis. And if anybody sees, looks at the video, they'll see that they were walking on the sidewalk. They were courteous. Police officers were walking with them. Nobody destroyed anybody else's property. Nobody was rude to anybody else. It was respectful. And you know what? When a bunch of people go walking down the street, they're walking and they're talking, and isn't that what it was supposed to all be about anyway? And part of what made that happen was our law enforcement agencies, whether it was our Sheriff's Department, or City Estatesville Police Department, or Mooresville Police Department, who, they're all comprised of humans. Humans make mistakes. None of us are perfect, none of our departments are perfect. But they really, all of them really try hard to be good law enforcement agencies and to be good fellow citizens in this county. And it paid off. And it paid off this week. So, really proud of our county, not what we did, but what others did. I think sometimes it's worth just recognizing that, you know what, this is a really great place to live. So, that was it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Robertson, any other comments?
Chairman, I'd like to make a couple. As a, as a 30-year law enforcement veteran, I'd just like to say, I'd like to echo first what Commissioner Robertson said. Mr. Scott, that was here before he had to leave, but he's the chairman of the NAACP or president. The sheriff had to leave. He said there's about 10 peaceful protesters tonight at Mitchell College, to echo your point. But as a police officer for over 30 years, I want to say that law enforcement, without law and order, we have anarchy. Law enforcement officers are human. We make mistakes. Sometimes, some are really bad. It was hard to watch the videos that we watched in Minneapolis as a police officer. It's hard to watch it as a citizen. But I want to say, I do appreciate the peaceful protesters and the people that are trying to have dialogue and bring about positive change in our country are being overridden and undermined by political groups like Antifa or other groups that are not honoring the memory of George Floyd. I think to do that, we have to continue to have unity, collaboration, and dialogue in order to have change in this country. As a police officer, I've stood in the trenches, and to see the positive videos that are not reflected on all channels, if you watch TV, of citizens protecting law enforcement officers, law enforcement in return protecting citizens, working together. The intent is to bring about positive change, better training, to bring about the, to bring to the forefront, as to Mr. Robertson's point, it's harder for us locally to even recruit law enforcement officers and people because of the national situations that they see. In a lot of cases, in a lot of cities and areas, they're not backed up by politicians. They are thrown under the bus when they take actions, and sometimes, most cases in law enforcement, I've had to take a life in the line of duty. You have to make split-second decisions. You don't have time to call your lawyer, your buddy, or anybody else and get an opinion. You have to do what's best for you at the time, within the laws and policies and procedures you're taught and the training you've been taught. Mistakes are made. So I want people and citizens to understand, put yourselves in everyone's shoes, the family of Mr. Floyd, the families of the law enforcement officers that are protected, that are paid to protect and serve every day. None of us are without flaws. So as a law enforcement officer over 30 years, now an elected official who's proud of our law enforcement, who's proud of the job they do, the community members like Mr. Scott that have brought about positive protests, I want to again applaud that on behalf of the board. But I just want to say it's hard to watch all these things because the looting, the destruction, the assaults, the needless things are not about Mr. Floyd's memory. They're not about bringing about positive dialogue. But as citizens of this country, we got to demand better. And so I just wanted to say that. Thank you for the time. We'll continue to pray for the family of Mr. Floyd, the citizens of this country, and together, you know, united we stand, divided we'll fall. And some people's intent is to divide us, so we've got to all keep that in mind, keep our eye on the ball. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Howt. Any further comments? Well, that takes us to the county manager's report. Almost have the last word.
Almost. Chairman Mallory, you alluded earlier regarding our mass testing, and I did want to announce that we performed two mass testing events last week, and we had 555 individuals that were tested at our events last week. We have two events scheduled this week. One is tomorrow, which is Wednesday, June the 3rd, and that will be at Mooresville High School. The other is Thursday, June the 4th, and that will be at Signal Hill Mall. Both of those testing events, we ask that you stay in your car. If you, if you do not have a vehicle and choose to walk up, they have, they have things and everything set up to handle patients and individuals that walk up. But we do ask if you come in a car, for you to remain in your car. The time is from 8:00 AM until 12:15 PM, and the testing is for individuals with symptoms suggestive of COVID-19, for close contacts of known positive cases of COVID-19, and then for the higher-risk patients. So those are two events tomorrow and Thursday. Tomorrow's at Mooresville High School, and Thursday, as is here in Statesville, at Signal Hill Mall.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jones. Just for the record, we had a closed session between our pre-agenda and open session, both of which are open sessions, but the closed session dealt with an attorney-client issue pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-18.11 subsection A3, and personnel issue pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-18.11 subsection A6. There's nothing to report out as far as an action item on either of those issues. Is there anything else for the good of the order? We don't have minutes to approve because we overburdened our clerk this last week with two half-day budget sessions, as she's worn her fingers to the nub trying to put together. So we'll have, I'm sure, three or four sets of minutes to review at our next meeting in June. So, being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned.